All right, I guess we're gonna start a little bit early, which is against...
It's 9:02.
Excuse me?
9:02.
It's 9:02, so we're getting this meeting started. I'm calling this meeting to order. First order of business is the Pledge Allegiance. The flag is to my right. Please stand and uncover. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Phil Ladue. I'm a Highgate resident for three decades now. My next order of business is, I had a lady ask me about the Select Board. She didn't know who was on the Select Board, so I'm gonna introduce the Select Board to the town. Richard Flint, he is the Select Board Chair. Vern Brodsky is the Vice Chair. Mary Souza is a Board Member. Scott Martin is a Board Member. And Kyle Lothian is a Board Member. All right, my justices the pieces, could you raise your hand? All right, thank you. You guys are gonna do the counting for us this morning if on any floor votes, so be prepared for that. Okay? At this time, I would take, I'd like to recognize two longstanding citizens of Highgate that passed away, Mr. Bruce Ryan and Mr. Charles Nei. I'd like to take a moment of silence for them too. Okay. Normally, the Town Annual Report dedicates it to an outstanding citizen in the town. This year, there was three people that, so they are all being recognized today. Is Amy Reynolds in the room? She was, she is getting done, done. Peter St. Germain, is he here? And Philip Brusel. Stand up, Phil, so you can be recognized. All right. Moving on. Normally, is Wayne LaRush here? Okay, he is not. All right, so we're gonna move on to the ground rules. The ground rules for this meeting. Robert's rules are the basic rules of order for this meeting. All motions and remarks should be addressed to the moderator. Articles must be moved, seconded, and restated by the moderator before debate may begin. Articles may be amended and amendments amended once with voting to proceed from the last proposal of the amendment in reverse order to the sequence of the proposal. If you figured that out, you let me know. Debate may be cut off by a motion and a two-thirds vote. The role of the moderator is to explain procedural questions, but no voter should hesitate to ask serious questions on articles to understand what is being voted on. Voters should stand up and give their name and speak in a loud, clear voice. And I think we have a young lady that's gonna have the mic. There's two that are gonna have a mic. A voter will not be recognized a second time on a particular article or amendment until all other voters who wish to speak on the issue for the first time are given a chance to do so. This is near and dear to my heart. Cell phones will be turned off or muted. If you must use your cellphone, please excuse yourself from the floor as not to be disruptive to the proceedings. Is anyone here not a Highgate resident? Please stand. Be advised that you are not able to speak or vote. If you are a, if you're not a Highgate registered voter, same-day voter registration is available at the check-in table. Please make sure you are a registered voter prior to any voting from the floor, including paper ballots. There will not be any voter registration taken and taking place in the middle of the floor meeting, including paper ballot votes. Please wait for the microphone before speaking. And finally, this is a campaign-free zone. No campaigning of any kind is allowed inside the polling place. This includes materials of any kind. This includes articles of clothing related to any warned article or ballot item or candidate. All right. The legally qualified voters of the Town of Highgate, Vermont are hereby warned and notified to the meeting at the Highgate Elementary School Gymnasium on Tuesday, March 5, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. to transact the following business. Article four, to receive and act upon reports of the Town Officers for the past year. Article five, shall the voters of the Town of Highgate set the final date of payment for fiscal year 2024-2025 property taxes to be Thursday, October 31, 2024, with payments to be received in the Town Office by 4:00 p.m. Article six, shall the voters of the Town of Highgate vote on all public questions and budgets by Australian ballot. Article seven, shall the voters of the Town of Highgate give approval for the village wastewater construction and authorize general fund expenditures up to $200,000 to be paid towards the total project cost of $4 million. Article eight, shall the voters of the Town of Highgate give approval for the town to sell one plus or minus acre of land from the Village Core property to Cathedral Square, a nonprofit corporation, for the express purpose of developing senior housing in the amount of $100,000. Article nine, shall the voters of the Town of Highgate appropriate $5,000 to assist with the moving expenses associated with the relocation of the Franklin County Field Days? Article 10, shall the voters of the Town of Highgate appropriate $585,000 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the capital improvement plan with an estimated $485,000 to be raised by taxes? Article 11, shall the voters of the Town of Highgate appropriate $1,060,134 to meet the expense and liabilities of the Town, of the Highway Fund, with an estimated $899,134 to be raised by taxes? Article 12, shall the voters of the Town of Highgate appropriate $1,413,307 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the General Fund with an estimated $707,147 to be raised by taxes? Article 13, to transact any other business legally authorized to be transacted, considered proper and necessary when met. Any questions? Yes. Okay, I'm also gonna read Article 1, 2, and 3, because they are on the ballot. To elect the following Town Officers. One Cemetery Commission for the term of five years. One Library Trustee for the term of one year, remaining on a five-year term. One Library Trustee for the term of five years. One Lister for a term of one year, remaining on a three-year term. One Lister for a term of two years, remaining on a three-year term. One Lister for a term of three years. One Moderator for the ensuing year. One Select Board Member for a term of one year, remaining on a two-year term. One Select Board Member for a term of one year, remaining on a three-year term. One Select Board Member for a term of two years, remaining on a three-year term. And one Select Board Member for a term of three years. Article 2, shall the voters of Town of Highgate authorize cannabis retailers in the Town of Highgate pursuant to, I'm not sure how to read that code, that law. Uh, what, what's, how do you read that law? Say again? Okay, 7 BSA Section 863. Article 3, shall the Town, shall the voters of the Town of Highgate authorize the elimination of the office of Lister and replace it with a professionally qualified assessor appointed by the Select Board who shall have the same powers, discharge the same duties, proceed in the discharge thereof in the same manner, and be subject to the same liabilities as are prescribed for Listers or the Board of Listers under the provision of Title 32? Okay, at this time, I have a gentleman that wants to speak to Article 2.
Hello, everybody, is that okay? Everybody doing okay, not too well? For those of you that don't know me, my name is John Reader. I was born and raised in Hager, Libya, Kentucky, military, I've lived here my entire life. Recently, I brought up the idea of a cannabis dispensary for the Town of Highgate. I'd like to explain what brought that about, so you know a little bit about what my intentions are. My VA doctors had suggested that I go to the dispensary when I was a kid. They could not give me a medical license for cannabis because I, it's a federal, it's not federally legal. So they just suggested, well, I visited some of the local inspectors after they were moved, and when I went in, I saw how much revenue was created. I have been medically retired for two years. I'm very young to be medically retired, but my health challenges are such that unless I'm in my own house, there's not really any employee that would enjoy. So when I saw how much revenue they were making, I thought to myself, this would be amazing in the Town of Highgate, because the revenue that's created is, for the state of Vermont for those employees, estimated to be upwards of $200 million. And it's kind of appropriate that we're standing in a school right now, because I'm not sure who knows this or not, but there's a 20% tax on cannabis. And 30% of that revenue tax goes directly to Vermont's after-school programs, the children, which is a huge needle. But that's generalized over the state, and I thought to myself, well, how can we do this for the Town of Highgate so that Highgate can benefit? And I went to the Town Offices, and I spoke with Wendy and Sharon, and asked how I would do that. And they said, well, you should go to the Select Board and discuss it with them. So I did. I went in seven times, and we talked about it. And I went on to get the requisite position, petition signatures. Now, I know that some people probably have some fears about having a dispensary or a service. Please let me assuage those right now by telling you that dispensaries and cannabis in the line is incredibly regulated. It's not like showing up at a bar and using a fake ID to get in. That cannot happen in a dispensary. They have machines that scan IDs. If you're not 21, you're not getting in. And all of the dispensaries are connected. So if somebody went to St. Albans and came to Highgate, and they were already over their eligibility limit, they wouldn't be allowed to purchase it. So I just wanted to say that my intentions really are to use as much of the revenue as is strictly responsible for the Town of Highgate for the revenues that they need and to try and help that business, help the other businesses, because if they come to one business in Highgate, they're probably gonna stop at another. And the second point that I'd like to raise is, I know some people probably think dispensaries are about cannabis. Well, some of them probably aren't. Mine would be. I would like to have CBD products. There's a lot of people that use CBD for pain and inflammation and things. I would like to have edible products for those that benefit from PHC or CBD that aren't able to ingest it through smoking. I would like to have pet products. I would like to have a full range of those across the spectrum. But I would also like to use education to talk about industrialized hemp and other things. Have that type of education available. I promise, if the Town of Highgate votes, that it's not to create an atmosphere of Harvey, it's not to create any type of lifestyle maybe that doesn't already exist. That's about it.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to Article 4. Article 4, to receive and act upon reports of the Town Officers for the past year. Have a motion. Is there a second? Call in favor?
All right.
Close? Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Article 5. Shall the voters of the Town of Highgate set the final date of payment for fiscal year 2024-2025 property taxes to be Thursday, October 31, 2024, with payments to be received into the Town Office by 4:00 p.m.? Second? We have a second. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Article 5 passes. Article? That's a, that's a voting one?
A ballot.
Do you have a question on that, Henry?
Is there any discussion?
Excuse me? So can you, can we, it be explained to us a little bit? What is it gonna cost us? Somebody building a new house, when are they gonna be assessed? Okay, Wendy?
Does this work? Okay, so we have currently two Listers at the Town Office. Pete and Amy, both of them are stepping down. Pete has already finished, and Amy is winding down. We advertised their jobs, which are part-time positions, and we didn't get any, any feedback, any interest. So towns across the state are all having the same issue, staffing different positions, particularly part-time positions without benefits. So we put an RFP out for bids for outside assessing services. Part of the process is to eliminate the Lister's office by statute. It has to be voted on by all of you. And it has to be voted on on the ballot. So there is a question on the ballot to eliminate the Lister positions to be replaced with an outside assessor. We did get one RFP back from an assessor out of Weedsfield that's willing to work with us. He works with a couple other towns. One of them is Fletcher. I believe 46, 46,000? A year was the quote we got. He would be doing 95% of his work remotely, only coming into the office for site visits, grievance hearings, or other requested meetings. So it'd totally be a different way of doing business. But unless we have people willing to step up and take those Lister jobs, I don't see another choice we have.
Thanks for your question, Henry. What are we seeing in Listers right now?
They're hourly, so it's right around the $20-an-hour mark. But at eight hours a week, it's not really a part-time job people are looking for. We have been budgeting for that third Lister position, which has not been filled. So the amount we budget for annually is not much different than what we would be paying this outside assessor.
Did you guys explain the pros and cons of that?
I think that the biggest change is gonna be John Furland walking into the Town Office saying, I need to talk to the Listers. Not gonna be anybody in-house physically most of the time. I think that's gonna be the biggest change, and it's gonna be an outside person you need to either make an appointment with, or, or email, or call. I don't know that there's any pros or cons other than that. The same, the job will be getting done, just in a different way.
All right, thank you all. Can we revert back?
I believe the contract that we, the Select Board has already approved the contract with the outside assessor pending a positive vote on the ballot today. And it's only for one year, I believe, correct, Sharon? So it would be after a year, we could reassess it.
And in the meantime, I would think you could double the salary of a Lister that lives or works in town and have possibly somebody that would approach us because of the increasing salary and also more knowledgeable about the town character. And doubling an in-town person still won't cost as much as that outside person.
All right. Yes?
I think the challenge with that, Richard, is learning the job. Learning the program that the assessors use. Amy said she's been doing the job since 2013, and it took a solid eight years to get very comfortable learning all of the software that the assessors use at the state level. And when someone's only working eight hours a week, it's really hard to learn that.
One year of contract, possibly somebody out there that's more knowledgeable in real estate than that we know of, that may step up to the plate. That's all I'm suggesting. Not going into a 10-year program, but merely, there's somebody out there. Swan found one. You have been a tracer, a Lister, unfortunately, from Swan. You're a big boy.
All right. Go ahead, Karen.
The thing is, if the town is going to train somebody on that software, I think it would work better. I don't think an outside person coming in is gonna work. We finally got somebody from the town to run it. I don't really think we should have an outside person come in and do the assessor job either.
I also like the idea that, unless there being somebody that we know, somebody from around the area, instead of somebody that is somebody outside, that we don't know where they're coming from and how they operate.
Go ahead, Henry. What happens if this vote, this has voted down?
We're up 2-3.
So basically, if you can step up to town, there will be no Listers in town after the last one steps down, until the position is resolved. All right, let's move on to Article 7. Oh, we have one more question.
Is it possible to make this a full-time position with benefits?
That is an article that has to be brought up to the Select Board, and that's gonna be voted on by the Town and not here on the floor. Everybody have a standard? All right. Are we done with Article 3? Everybody set their feet? All right, let's move on to Article 6. Shall the voters of Town of Highgate vote all public questions and budgets by Australian ballot? Have a motion? Is there a second? Is there a second?
How many, Dennis, how many voters, resident voters out there in Town of Highgate? 2,400 voters in Town of Highgate. 2,400 in Town of Highgate. And many of the votes are done off the floor with probably 100 people in residence and maybe 50, 60 calling the vote. You're talking like 3% of the whole town is regurgitating what the Town can do. And I, don't get me wrong, I'd love to see this continued town meeting. I think it will, but we should find another form so that some of the other voters can be, can participate in some of these town votes, which some of them can attend with work issues, etc., etc. There's gotta be something we can figure out here. It just need more representation. Too many people not inhale within their say.
Any other discussion?
I'm just curious if there's any way we might be able to, for instance, Article 7, and I'm not jumping around, Article 8, issues of this nature and not much money, why can't we put those on the ballot for the public to vote on? Why do we have to be done on the floor?
Sam, I'm over here.
Hi, there you are.
So we are a town that votes public questions and budgets from the floor. Those two questions that happen to be on the ballot today about the Listers and the retail cannabis, by statute, we have to ask them on the ballot. But a general public question, which this is, has to be asked from the floor. And to change it, we have to change it from the floor.
Well, that's not necessarily true, because if we're voting on, we wanna vote Australian ballot, but if we vote Australian ballot, it's not gonna be voted off the floor, is it?
We lost to beat one of them.
I, what I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to change this from what it is, what it currently is. I understand Richard's issue, and I mean, I don't wanna lose this either. I've been doing this for a long time. But, but the fact of the matter is, we're voting on $200,000 with, with what? 100, maybe? We're lucky. 100 people here, and it's not fair to the, to the public. It's not. I hear that complaint all the time about not taking time off to go to town meeting to vote on this stuff. So I'm trying to find a resolution, if you will, or a compromise to where we don't necessarily have to vote on, on articles like this on the floor. We, the, the public can share in this. And I'm welcome for suggestions that we can legally do this. Make this for you, that we don't, that we don't vote on anything, say, over whatever, 100,000, whatever.
Sam, I, I think this is what we wanna do is, what you're saying, the general budget, our life, we let it go to our strictly ballot and have something on the, have a regular, like, informational meeting, and so the rest of people can vote. You know what I'm saying? Bring this all to, on the ballot, a valid, a valid vote, and just have a regular... Bring this all to, on the ballot, a valid vote, a valid vote, and just have a regular, you know, an informational meeting prior to this and... Do you understand what I'm saying? So, so we can vote on it on the floor.
I do understand, Richard, but, but my point being is, we're trying to pass the wastewater system and the sale of the recent property on the floor.
Right.
With 100 people or less making that decision, that's not fair.
Right, and it's right, and that's why we're up here. We wanna, we'd like to vote Australian ballot on that too and just, and what we're gonna do is do away with the, with the full vote. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I do understand what you're saying, Richard, but to do that, go by Australian ballot, you're basically taking away town meeting.
Yes. Hey, well, there will be informational meetings and that kind of stuff, but, you know, so you know what's going on. The problem is there is that we don't, if we get five or six people, they go through our informational.
I'm aware.
You know, so, you know, the board is open for suggestions and, you know, which way can we go, you know?
All right, that's all I have to do.
Yes, Sam.
Not that I'm against Australian ballot, I just wanna know what happens if it goes Australian ballot and things get voted down? Because then if here, in town meeting, things get voted down, it then gets amended. So just the question of the logistics of it? If something gets voted down, but people are all, taxes went up, the state put us up 20%, and they all go, "I have nothing on it." Yep. Throw down everything. What happens to that?
I got that. So currently, we vote everything for the school on the ballot. And if that school budget doesn't pass today, it's revised, we revote. Same. If the town budget didn't pass on the ballot, it's gonna go back to the board, revise it, and we revote.
Glad Clarence.
We've been attending meetings, having a month in council for information property. And we have a lot of informational meetings, and I mean, I've gone on for seven years. We see seven people per night. So I suggest that we don't start a town meeting until 1:00 on the day of town meeting. But in the morning, we have our information about the products that are on the paper, the articles that are going to be, before, do not vote till after 1:00. And the ballots, then, in our act, you'll have people informed, not just picking up stories on the streets.
All right, maybe over here, you don't speak.
I was gonna ask. I was gonna ask the same thing before, said, "How many people go to the informational meetings?" But then, his suggestion is very good, so I'd like to go with that too.
Mr. Rango.
What, for you, to have informational meeting? I was wondering if you could have an informational meeting before it gets put in the, in the vote, or official vote on it? That would be a lot better, and a lot of people would more get involved, because that would be a way of doing it where more people get involved in everything in town, where other than people decide, you know, everything.
That's called the first and third Thursday of every month. The select board meets at 6:30.
I, I have a question, but before it gets put in the vote, it gets official, have a meeting before that. And that way, everybody had a chance to see.
They do, John, they do it, uh...
Yeah, I knew what I think about, everybody.
That's the additional meetings, okay? You're answering your own question, Mike, your own question.
It ain't the same, usually we have a farm while we've got the hell later or something to vote. But it's likely to change, we got a different era now, everybody works, and it's hard to get out of work from that. I know, I deal with that.
Go ahead, Mr. Ford.
I'd like to know who keeps nominating this. Who's advocating the soft town meeting?
I've been letting Richard answer my question.
I will briefly say that I believe it was you that tabled it last year. By law, we were legally required to bring it back up this year because of that.
Because it was tabled?
It got tabled last year, and I believe it was you.
Yes, it was me, and the year before too. But, so we'd be better off to vote yes or no, and if it was no, it wouldn't come back up?
Yes, sir.
I am Katie Bishop. For 37 years, I've been a taxpayer in this town. And unless I took time off, I wouldn't even be able to cover the town. And all those years, maybe a handful, I was able to get time off and cover the town. And all those, all those million dollars or whatever, hundreds of thousands of dollars, I had absolutely no sense. And there's a lot of people helping, that are exactly waiting. And not to step on anybody's toes and say, "Oh, we should have a town meeting." We're in a world where we have more than enough information that's helpful. And if we can't get on a Zoom meeting, or go to a select meeting, we get the information that we need and shame on us, because, but to vote, to have just few people vote, and just to say, "The heck, we have the rest of the people that pay taxes in this town," is just not right. So it's fine that we come into the, come into the age that we're living and not back in the age of the Americans.
We should have an informational meeting on Monday night.
Can't hear you.
On Monday night, and then have Australian ballot on Tuesday, town meeting. To me, that would take care of the problem, would be much easier, or it would be an informational meeting.
Kyle, lose your mic. We do have a lot more problems. Lose your mic, people can't hear you about here.
I was just saying, and I think it'd be a lot smarter to have an informational meeting on Monday night. I think you'd get a lot better turnout with informational meeting. And then on the actual day of voting, then you could have Australian ballot, and then everyone could have their vote. I've been on different boards. Participation on this day is dwindling. I understand people complain about losing it. It's the traditions what makes small towns like mine special, over in a new time. And I really think that would be the answer to our problem, to gain more disparticipation.
Kyle, I have been at a lot of the informational meetings that we have had, and they're so poorly attended. Why do you think that if we did a Monday night informational meeting and voted on the following Tuesday, that we would get so much better attendance, that it would be worth switching to that? I just think that there's a lot of value to being able to have the discussion here like we have every year.
To reply to that, my name is Austin Pavey. I don't believe you can have much more, but you've given people the opportunity to do it. I don't think you have a lot of participation, I really don't. People are set in their ways, they have busy lives, but it gives people that opportunity, and no excuses if they don't decide to go.
Well, that's right.
I need to drive the word here. I've been coming to these meetings 57 years since I've been in ID. We used to take time off of work to come to these town meetings, because if they aren't lively going to vote, we're gonna pay for taxes, and we gotta vote. I don't know if it has to do with the generations, but the older generation had a commitment on how their area ran. The younger generation, I don't think, liked getting involved as much as what the older generation did. I'd like to keep the town meeting day on, but we used to come here, and we couldn't even find a place to stay when we used to come here and vote, until they took away our school. Your meetings really declined. So my personal feeling is, if a person is worried about his taxes, and he's worried about what he's gonna spend, he shouldn't be able to take a day of vacation, one year, to come here and speak about it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Coda. That's easy to say, like, some players don't cooperate for that, you lose your job. So, no offense to you, this is a fact of life. Like, you can't, because you can't just not show up to work. You gotta be there, they expect you to be there. So I'm not having town meeting for that reason. I'm a young generation, and there are stuff that came up that I wish I could have voted on and couldn't, because I had to be to work, thank you.
Here, Jared.
What I'm trying to say is, you know every year what year your meeting day is. It's all you do is apply the beginning of the year for a day's vacation, period. And they'll schedule it accordingly. If you don't get it, fine, but at least you made the attempt. And that's how, what I had to do. And I always got the day off, I don't know why, but it was because of town meeting day, that they let me have the time off. If you explain to them why you're taking the vacation, and why you're getting involved, most of your company will let you.
Is there any other discussion? Yes. Richard Haines.
I'm Brandy Mascol. As a parent of young children, I know that evening informational meetings are really difficult. For years, I've made comments about it would be really nice to have an informational meeting on a weekend. I feel like you might get a little bit more attendance, you'll have people that might not be working a second shift or have young kids at home that they need to be putting to them. So if we do switch to Australian ballot, I'm just asking, could we consider a weekend informational meeting?
Absolutely. Glad, Sharon.
Town meeting is a very tradition, our community, our state, our country. And if we eliminate town meeting, it's gone forever. Look what's happening here today, we're able to discuss and banter and go back in the past. This is what our country is about, this is what our community is about, to get together and discuss and come to conclusions. The elimination is the time, gone forever. And we, yes, maybe we're in time when, we used to have a lot more people coming to town meeting, or in time when not, somebody are coming right now. But does that mean it's gonna stay like this forever? Maybe another 20, 30 years, things change that, we'll be back to a lot of people wanting to attend town meeting. But if you eliminate it, a chance won't ever be here again.
Mr. Rango.
Yeah, wait till you get to my, uh...
Whatever, if you go to that system, voting Australian ballot, there's people in the town, I will see the blue card that says "vote yes" on a project. That was kind of a little upset, but what about a card, or somebody in the office calling a bunch of local people, say, "Get informational." A lot of times, we put this on the vote, we forget about it, but that would be still awesome, that we get... I got told about one meeting that I went to for somebody that was having a perfect job, and I decided to go to the meeting, because it was of interest to me. And I feel strongly that the leadership in the town would have, like, a call in the area and tell people, and rather than spending the money on the card, just say, "Yes, we'll vote for it."
All right, Sharon, your minute.
So we do everything possible to get information out to the town residents and taxpayers. It goes on social media, goes on front porch forum, it goes on the town's website, it goes in the paper. It goes in articles written by people for the paper. Some of you get individual attention because you get mailings directly from me. The postcard went to every registered voter, one per household. It was an attempt to get you information. We want you to be as informed as possible. We're not trying to pull anything over on anyone, we're being as transparent as possible. I'm not sure how else we could possibly do it, except like Richard Flynn said one day, maybe the only way to reach people is to go door to door. Robo calls won't just hang up, will they?
Hi, my name's Mike Flarus. Been in almost 20 years of hiking residence, and I have family ties here even longer. I currently act duty military, over 27 years of service. To my comment to the man in the back, I'm sorry I don't know your name, but it's not so easy for servicemen and women to come and to vote on town meeting day when they're on the other side of the world. Half my life, I've not been at home. My only choice to vote is absentee. And if you continue to have the floor vote, you're robbing your servicemen and women's ability to vote on all the issues that affect their home life. My other point I'd like to make, I know there's some strong opinions that people, or the older generation, we've already identified, that want to keep this meeting. My question to you there, hardliners that want to keep it, what is the town gonna do when you're gone? And your heart, your passion for the town politics and taxes and all the things that go on, you're not gonna be replaced by the younger generation. Here's your chance to start developing the future for us. How is this informational meeting gonna work before you're gone? Because when you're gone, the younger generation, as you said, aren't gonna put in the effort that you are. So that's what I have to say.
And also to go along with the gentleman, and also with respect to what you said about 57 years and only a town meeting, Paul, I respect what you say. However, the point is that we are not 57 years ago. We are now, and we need to come up, like Kyle said, and the young lady over here said. Why can't we make the tradition Saturday before we vote? Every Saturday before we vote? We started a new tradition, what's wrong with that? So all the people in here, you heard it, we're all educated on it? So we started a new tradition, we come into the, we come into the world of information that unfortunately we live in, and most of it's misinformation most of the time. And we give the people the chance that aren't here, that can't get the time off, and respectfully to you, even though you put the time, you ask your boss to put the time off, it's not the same with you. You don't get it just because you asked for it. So...
So can we amend this article to basically say what Mr. Macey just said? Because I would rather not vote yes for this right now without knowing what the future is like. Because I think the select board probably learns more today than they have the rest of the year from us on their general rule. So are you making an amendment to this article? Yes, we did. Well, my amendment is that, stand up, I gotta write this down. Would most people prefer Saturday vote meeting, or a Saturday informational meeting? Would most people prefer Saturday voting or a Saturday informational meeting?
Can I say something? Martin Doma has informational meetings, I don't think they have 15, 20 people at night. And then all they do is vote on Australian ballot. Informational meetings, when they have Australian ballot, nobody shows up.
Again, my vote would be to continue as we are. I think that I'm in minority. So I would be able, I would like to have an option to still be able to communicate. And I guess we do that twice a day, every month on select board meeting. But at the same time, I don't think you could get an amount of people like this together so that we can. I've had my mind changed by people in the public like this. So I think we would be losing out if we get away from town meeting. I would like to somehow continue to be. So my vote or my amendment would be to, if this fails, would be to have an informational meeting on Saturday so that vote could be by Australian ballot on a Tuesday.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Emily Wimble. I've lived at Highgate my entire life and I consider myself lucky enough to attend an educational institution that gives their students town meeting day off. So I was able to plan more extensively than I think the average person would want to to make sure that I could be here today. But I don't see why a town meeting structure like this can exist at the same time as a print choice or Australian style voting system can exist. Because like the floor vote, I don't think is what matters as much today as I think the political discourse and community conversation that we're having right now. I don't think town meeting day is necessarily about us being able to say yay or nay. I think it's about the community having the platform to come together at a certain point and discuss what we should and should not be doing with our money or whatever. So I think the verbiage of sort of like informational meeting is what a lot of people might not care for a lot because if we call this quote unquote informational meeting a town meeting where we all meet and discuss and then later we go Australian ballot, I don't see how that is any much different to what we're doing here today. But it also expands the voter pool tenfold and allows so many more people access to our community and what we do with our money.
I think we could look at history and find out what would happen if we went to Australian ballot. Does anybody remember the Siskiyou Valley Union District meetings? At the Siskiyou High School where there would be several hundred people get together and we would have rousing debate. Remember some characters that would be very vocal during those meetings? And that was because there was a vote on the budget. And a few years ago, that went to Australian ballot. Now when they have an informational meeting, I don't know if they have five people that come. It disappeared. That disappeared from Franklin County forever because they went to Australian ballot. So in that case, it was the three communities getting together, Swan, Highgate, Franklin. Doesn't happen ever anymore. So that's what's going to happen. You can, I think there's already several people that have mentioned that informational meetings are unattended. Nobody goes. Throughout history in Vermont, and I've been, not 57 years, but almost that, coming to these meetings, it's always been a select few who come. Those who want to come, come. And those who, there's a small percentage that yes, can't get here. But most of the time, if you want to get here, you can get here. And I'm thinking that it would be a loss for Highgate because a lot of you people that I'm seeing here today, I will see you next year here and maybe once in a while in between. But you're talking about eliminating a tradition that goes deeper than just money. And I think people that come to this meeting, they get here because they want to be here. And the apathy that it's shown throughout the year on the informational meetings, the select board meetings, everything else, that's just the way of life. And people who show up, that make their voice heard at a meeting like this, that's what really counts. And so I think it's to keep this tradition going. And just because these are the people that care. Thank you.
Just to let you know before we move on, this is very contentious, obviously, very contentious here in the town. There's two factions here. My job as moderator is to keep this along, okay? Now if I have seven voters that stand, this will go to a paper ballot. So your neighbor won't know how you vote. And I think you will vote your conscience on that paper. So if you want it to be a paper ballot, I just need seven voters to stand. All right, Wendy. We're going to a paper ballot on this article, but before we do that, is there any more discussion? What do you mean a motion from the floor to go Australian ballot for this? Okay. Doesn't that have to be a motion from the staff?
Yes.
A second? It does, but there's seven people, but there was no motion. I'm not making the motion, I have seven people stand up, okay? I can't make a motion. So seven people that stand up, I need someone to make a motion. We got a motion, a second? All in favor of that paper ballot? Opposed? Okay. All right, so now we'll have a little bit of discussion.
Yeah, for what?
But we have, we have to have a second. We haven't had a second on Henry's motion either, so I have to have a second on Henry's motion. Are you a second? Who's a second? Okay, we have a second. It's a Saturday informational meeting prior to the town meeting day. Is that correct, Henry?
Wendy, we can't hear you.
She's got to type this in, hold on.
Multitasking, everybody. I was just clarifying Henry's motion and it was to amend the article to read that we would be having a Saturday information session followed by Australian ballot voting on Tuesday.
I don't see why you couldn't. It's just verbiage. Okay, we have Henry. Anybody second that? Anybody second that? Okay. All in favor of Henry's amendment on discussing? Excuse me?
We have discussion on the amendments.
Okay, let's have a discussion on the amendments. Go ahead, Sharon.
My name's Chris Shepherd. I used to be on the NPSD verge board when the town went through I-6. My only issue with Henry's amendment is I just don't like tying us to an actual day. I would like to say it's something like within five days of the vote, something like that. Maybe even a possibility to vote, two informational meetings. That way we could try to get a bigger demographic in our group. I just don't want to tie us to one specific day and then find what that is.
I don't, just like some clarification or understanding that it is, it really is an informational meeting because we're not going to be able to change anything in it during these meetings, correct?
That's correct.
So to have a meeting, when would you have one that you could change things before they get in the vote? What would that have to be like?
First Tuesday in March.
Never. I'm pretty sure that's a select board meeting where you have to go to the select board meeting and talk to the select board to get them to change the article to the verbiage that we want. Okay? So you probably have to do it no later than December so it could be more to the public. Does that answer your question? All right, Sharon.
I'm Robin Klein. We've been here for about two years. Wendy was my first friend when we came in. I'm in the under 45 crowd and one of the first things that I did was join the planning commission. So it's not that we don't want to be involved. It's that the burdens of today are a lot different than they were 25, 50 years ago, right? Most incomes, most households require two incomes to keep the household going. The housing market now is not what it used to be. Childcare is its own board image. I'd be surprised if a quarter of the people here are in that under 45 crowd. And it's not because we don't want to do this. We are the new generation coming in and we want to make this town a place that we want to raise our children. And so I don't want you to think that it's not because we don't care. It's because our responsibilities are different and we want to be as investors and whatnot.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kenella. I've been in Highgate for a little over 30 years. I spent half my adult life as a hardliner. And I moved up here and I found out that wasn't really too popular. I'm not one of the hardliners who want to come up there and change. I liked the way it was. I moved here because I liked Vermont, I liked the little town, I liked the town meetings. I don't like change. I spent half my adult life in a town where we had no say. We voted, a lot of time we voted ignorant because we didn't have them. But we voted. This is great. I've been here a little over 30 years. I probably went to half of the town meetings because yes, I had a work. When I couldn't get it off, I'd come to the town meetings. Or was on second shift, I at least do half of the town meetings. This is very important. Most of you know nothing except that town meeting, don't take it for granted. It's very important. If it's important enough to you, you're going to come to the meeting. People will start to come when something happens that they don't like. Because this is where you can voice your opinion and then vote on it and have a real say in what happens to your town. So don't change.
Alicia King, I've been here all my life. I love coming to town meeting. I have a question, though. When we're not voting at town meeting, how many voters actually vote? That's going to help me form decisions today. Because I don't know how many people overall at all of our elections come in and vote. If it's like 200, I mean, that's not much different than today. So what, like they're not even voting. So if it's a large number, that's going to help me be informed. So how can we find that out?
Okay, so I have been here since 2011 and I went back 10 years to 2013. So I've got percentages here. Like last year was 62 people on the floor, which is 3% of our voter checklist. We had 320 people vote at the polls, that was 14%. We had two years of COVID where there was no floor meeting. Back in 2020, we had 78 people on the floor. 688 people voted at the polls. That number is up that year because it was a presidential primary just like today. 2019, we had 94 people on the floor and 280 at the polls. 2018, 137 on the floor, 374 at the polls. I could keep going?
No, that answers my question.
Thank you.
All right, Sharon.
I actually liked what this lady here said about calling it a town meeting, it's the information meeting. There's a lot of this kind of back and forth of information. You don't come, you don't have to say, nobody comes. But there's a secondhand information stuff that I know. It goes on Facebook, it goes on social media. And somebody who went to the information meeting then reports. And I've gotten a lot of information when I can't go to the information meetings. So in a way, we're saying, okay, we need the Australian ballot for people who can't come to the town meeting day. And we need information meetings, but people who don't come. Well, I don't see people who don't come to town meeting day. Anyway, what I liked what she said about calling the information town meeting day, it's still keeping our community. And somebody said, oh, nothing changes if we don't vote. But my mind changes the whole time in these meetings, the information meetings, the town meeting. Actually, I still not sure which way I'm going to vote on Australian ballot because I'm listening to everybody and I like this input. So having a town meeting, not a town voting day, this isn't even called town voting day, even though it is, but call it a town meeting day, it is a town community day. We get together, we discuss. We just discussed Article 2 and 3 without being able to vote on it, right? And then we're going to go and we're going to vote. Or I don't vote yet, so then I'm going to go vote. The information that someone with the campus thing, that was very helpful. But we want to keep our community feel. I think that's why people don't want to do town meeting day. I don't want to either. I grew up on town meeting day. That was a great thing, go to town meeting day since I was a little kid. So calling it something other than informational meeting, which it is informational. This is an informational meeting. We get so much information here. So just maybe go with having a town meeting day, as he said, on the Saturday before. Maybe we can't change anything on the ballot, but maybe we will change the people who vote and how they will vote on the ballot. Another possibility during that town meeting day is let's vote on what's a backup plan if that ballot doesn't go through. We've had the chance to say, line item, can we cut this? We used to do that. Just a little bit of information to help us all decide.
So just, it seems strange to me that all of us that are here today who care about the town and want to come to town meeting and we're going to vote to stop having this meeting and we're going to vote for the people who aren't here, it doesn't make any sense to me.
All right, so you're up.
Alice Susan Coda. I attend select board there is any two weeks. There's only about a handful of people. I'm on the village board once a month and it's not that many people. People wants to be involved, they need to go to the select board meeting. I started doing this about eight years ago and it has opened my eyes. I have learned a lot. I keep people informed. I'm kind of the messenger for the town of Highgate. If somebody asks me something, I will give the answer. If not, I will look for it. But I am, I'm. People need to look like me. That would be hope in your life.
I'm Stacy Coller. I'm Stacy Coller and I'm here to vote today, yes, for the Australian ballot. And the reason for that is it is a lot of time out of the day. My employer is very responsive and allowed me to come today. But it's not typical. For many of our people that live in Highgate, they work in Burlington, they work in St. Albans. They would love to vote, especially on some of these big ticket items. They want to have a say. But they can't have a say if they can't be here at nine o'clock on a Tuesday. And that's just not feasible for everybody.
Hi, I'm Colin Hammond from Highgate. Hi. Good luck. You good? Okay. I'm here to vote yes for the Australian ballots also because I like coming to town meetings. meetings. Unfortunately, now I'm the main caretaker for my mother. And the only reason I'm here today is because my sister stepped up and took over my duties. Otherwise, I wouldn't be able to come to vote today. And there's a lot of issues that I really want to go on.
I'd like to make a motion now and vote the question.
I have a question for a second.
I have a question. For Wendy. How much time and what's it cost in the revote for Australian ballot?
So I guess that is dependent on if we as a town have it in our budget to program the cards and use the tabulator or if it's just one question, yes, no, can count, that's easy and expensive. It doesn't cost a lot. I get paid the same no matter how many hours I'm here. So it's not a huge expense to have a revote, no.
Is that a member to move? Please, the question on, second by Henry. About four, does a gentleman out here want to speak and then move on?
I'd like to amend the motion to make it where we vote either yes or no for town meeting, so it'll be more simple for everybody. Right now, you're voting yes or no whether to have information. So I'd like to amend the motion to have it yes or no equaling town meeting.
Today?
Today.
So sir, your motion was to keep town meeting as is?
As is. Yes or no, today?
Motion, is there a second? Is there any discussion on this?
Move the motion.
But I got to keep this and I want to make sure, I'm trying to keep it straight. Listen to it, okay? All right. On the amendment for a Saturday informational slash town meeting day, is there any discussion on this before we put it to a vote? Yes, sir.
Does that mean that we are having a meeting, whether or not the original question passes or fails?
We have to start going reverse order and then we'll have Australian ballot last.
Okay, so this is not yes or no on Australian ballot. This is let's have an information meeting.
I believe what this means is that we change the amendment.
Change the amendment.
We change the amendment, that's when we pull it off the floor.
You're going to vote on the amendment first.
You have to vote the amendment. Maybe you have to vote on that.
Robert Cruz already.
Yes, that goes, no, go back to the original amendment.
It seems like we're getting the cart before the horse.
You're going to vote on the amendment, Robert Cruz already.
All right, so we are talking about, we have, we have, we have the original article, which we have, we also have an amendment to the amendment to keep the town meeting as is. And then we have the Saturday informational ballot.
What the hell's going on?
I'm writing it down, so I'm just trying to read this so we can correct. So we have the first one.
You also have one to vote paper ballot.
I'd like some clarification. I'll rescind my motion if I had some sort of, and I don't want to use the word promise, that we are going to be able to have some sort of meeting if this does go to Australian ballot. If you guys tell me that, I'll rescind my motion and we'll be voting on the original one. Question?
I don't think we can do that. But it really makes sense to have as many people involved as possible. So to me, it's an operator, but I don't think people want to do that.
The problem is we have to vote on the article and we have
You got to vote on the amendment first that I made.
Exactly.
And that is just a yes or no to keep the meetings the way they are.
Okay, so Henry made, Henry, you've withdrawn your motion. Do I have a second to this?
Amendment you have motion. We do it there, so.
Henry, we'll be scratching this off. Okay. We had a motion to keep the town meeting as is and we had a second, correct? Do we have a second on that one? We did, okay. So now we can have discussion on this one.
Hold the motion. Thank you. Vote on it.
So we're just going to vote on Article Six as is?
No, we're going to, the amendment was to vote as, we're going to vote to keep the town meeting as is and then we're going to vote on Article Six. And that is going to be a vote about if I've got this.
But it's the same thing as Article Six. It's either you vote it down or you don't.
Well, we had a town meeting.
And then in Article Thirteen, if we choose to decide that we want an informational meeting, I believe that would be the time to do so.
Can I speak up here? If you vote on, if you vote on the amendment to keep the meetings the way they are, the rest of the motions are dead.
Correct. So basically, your motion is
Quit confusing everybody by bringing up, when we get done this one, we're going to vote on that one. Okay, we're voting on the amendment. When that amendment, if it passes, if it defines, then you vote the next one. If it passes, the rest of them are dead.
Nobody's trying to confuse anybody.
No, goodness, he's bringing up the other motion.
Your amendment and the original one are exactly the same. So the way I understand it, we're voting on town meeting, yes or no. Or ballot vote, yes or no. Article Six as is. I understand how we're voting right now.
We're voting right now. And we decided that it was going to be a paper ballot. We had that there, so Article Six is going to be a paper ballot.
So give me a minute or two to set up over here, but we're going to do single file starting over here. You'll check in with me, you'll get your paper ballot, you'll vote, you'll check out with Shelley. If there's anybody that can't physically get up, just let us know, we'll bring it to you.
So now I'd like to also remind all the voters that a yes vote on Article Six would mean we're voting for Australian ballot. A no vote means we're going to keep the town meeting as is.
What'd he say? What'd he say?
But he understands.
Yes, to keep the vote the way it is.
More the vote no.
I amended it.
Leave it the same.
Oh, okay.
More the vote no.
So a yes vote on Article Six, a yes vote means if the yeses win, it's not going to be Australian ballot. It knows when we keep this town meeting as is.
Oh, you only amended it.
But it's not.
I don't care.
It's the same, it's the same, it's the same meaning, but different wording. So that's the confusion. Okay, so let me clarify this. You want to keep the town meeting as is where we have floor votes on all budget items. Is that correct?
It's what you have.
That's correct. So you basically have, in your amendment, is saying you want to keep the town meeting as is with floor votes, so we can move on to Article Six to vote on.
His amendment, they're saying his amendment, we've done the vote yet. On the one of the vote, we have to vote on.
No. So it's confusing.
Now, you're confusing.
Right, Jerry. On the vote that they put on the ballot.
I amended it.
I know. But that's what's confusing everybody. So my question is, do we leave it as it's on the ballot saying, if you vote yes, you want Australian, if you vote no, you want to keep it as is? Is that what you want, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're reading it as it's, okay, so I need you, sir, to rescind your motion?
It's a no vote, we stay the way we are.
Correct. So he's rescinding his motion. Do I have a second? All right. Okay, so before we vote, we'll read the article again so everybody just understands what's going on. Article Six, tell the voters in town of Highgate, post all public questions and budgets by Australian ballot.
Well, for Republicans, I voted against it. It's a lot of time. Thirty-six of us and one hundred and fourteen of them, which means that's less than thirty of the population. So given that the governor vetoed some people, we can't, we can't uphold the governor's veto as well. We need to have thirty-seven, thirty-eight, so we have to pass some process to uphold the governor's veto. So basically, they don't have to talk to us and a lot of times, they don't talk to us. But we have a lot of problems, everyone knows, applying taxes, schools, all the things that are unplayed every day. And so we're trying, maybe I can answer some questions today. I know the murders that are probably taxes could be going up to about twenty percent or more. And they, to what they passed last year, I'm responsible for that. They're trying to ease it by taking this five percent cap off, but they actually don't know what that's going to do. The schools overspent by two hundred and forty-three million dollars last year and that's why they're dealing with this tax increase. And some towns will be worse than others because some school districts will be spending more. Here, I think we are in better shape, but people know that some of the, some of the people spent a lot. But increased taxes, a lot of the taxes being increased are not called taxed. As you can remember, last year, they changed all the rules for, the fees for registrations of vehicles, the big rigs and all those things. Well, that's a tax, comes back to new sales eventually. And I think going into effect next year, they've got a payroll tax going on businesses that have to pay for childcare, some of the childcare stuff. We've got a long list of taxes that are increasing on us, so we can't imagine.
All right, the poll, has everybody voted? Because their, it's going to be closed. Are you close, Wendy?
Last call.
Last call. Last call to vote? It's closed.
So I won't talk anymore, but I'll just take some questions from you if you have anything else burning on your agenda.
Hi, I'm Heather Cogan. I'm just doing a special needs. I don't understand why we people don't have a school is under control. How the people say in our school, special income's a special end. I was nine, I was with ADHD, was a short-term span. If I didn't get that to help my needed, I would never have even tried college or anything else. I think it's time for schools to go back to the old-fashioned way and have people, have our people say in our education.
Thank you, Mary.
I asked you the question out there and I'll ask it publicly. Are our taxes going up twenty percent, our school taxes, property taxes?
I, I can't answer that for you. Someone in town should be able to answer that because the tax bill will come out of town meeting. Why I can't answer is because every town is different. So I haven't looked at Highgate's town, so I don't even know if we know that yet because that would be on the tax bill for this, this fall.
I'm just telling you, that's sending a lot of fear in people's
But the president or the governor's financial staff has told us that they expect that the average, average across the state, increase in tax will be nineteen and a half percent. That was before we found out that there was going to be a two hundred and forty-three million dollar deficit because of the extra spending of schools. So depending on the school district, that would raise from the average, say, nineteen and a half percent. They were suggesting perhaps on average another one and a half percent.
Any other questions for President LaRocque?
I've got a question on registrations, you want to believe this now? I grew up a kid, Jade White Box, got two breaking plates every year, put the whole long time, wall of garage, narrow, wooden plate, little paint field off, rolling video out of a sticker. What's the deal?
It was, you know, the agency of transportation last year did not ask for fee increases anywhere. But the Democratic legislature wanted to raise money and so they raised those fees.
Ouch.
Any other questions for President LaRocque?
So I haven't worked in state politics, but I have worked in local and county line politics, and so I know it's not an easy thing to do. I'm also not a realist or Republican, but when you come in here and you immediately make comments about us versus them, it's not helpful and it makes the divisiveness even worse. I'm not saying that there are not people in my group that are not difficult to work with and I'm not saying that I agree with everything that's been passed the last couple of years. But we need you as our representative to come in and show that you're trying to work with the other people regardless of their willingness to work with you.
I heard, I hear you and I know exactly what you're saying. And I had this, excuse me, I had this same discussion in Berkshire with a couple of people there last night. And, but I'm asked to tell you what the truth is, what the situation is. And I'm not telling you that I don't like the people on the other side of the aisle. I do. There's many people there I like very, very much. But we're diabolically opposed in many cases in terms of philosophy. I sit on the Corrections and Institutions Committee, cap the bills and some of the money that's being used, that comes from his grants to the town, comes from my committee, but Corrections, I'm on Corrections Committee. Right now, we're struggling with philosophically, we have progressives on my committee that want all prisoners let out of jail by 2026. We have a hundred prisoners in Mississippi in a private prison. They don't believe that they should be in a poor profit prison. They think they should be here closer to their families. Now, these are long-term, so these are people that have done real bad things in Mississippi. The charge is thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars per inmate per year to house them in Mississippi. It costs us ninety-eight thousand dollars to house an individual in prison in the state of Vermont. to house an individual in prison in the state of Vermont. Our prisons are a hundred and twenty percent, twenty-seven percent over capacity. They want to bring those people home. Well, if we bring them home, we'd have to build a new prison. We'd have to pay ninety-eight thousand to thirty-five. Well, we'd have to build a new prison. So you can't just build a hundred, see, hundred beds because you've got medical, psychological, and all the other beds. We have to build a hundred and thirty beds, a hundred thousand beds. It's a million dollars a bed amount. So by the time I think that I don't, maybe in ten years, we'd end up paying two-hundred-million dollars for bringing these people back just because some people feel that they shouldn't be in there. So I talk, no disrespect, when I talk about Democrats. I'm telling you right now, they have the voting power and the control. And so if I could leave, I could go down there and I make arguments. If you go on, you can go on YouTube, you can watch the committee meetings, you can see the kinds of questions I ask, because I ask questions. And many times on my committee, when I ask the questions and hear the answers, we end up going a different way. Last year, we voted unanimously on my committee, everything that was put out of it. So there had to be a lot of compromise when we do that. Well, this year, you're going down a route, say, continue. Well, I'm not going to help you.
We, we're putting in. How many thousand dollars you save for prisoner per year?
Around ninety-eight thousand.
What does it cost to educate a child per year?
I do not know that.
Why are we putting more money into a prisoner? It's done wrong than we are into children who need to be put in the right direction. We need to correct this thing and make prisoners survive on what we're paying for children, or less.
And we do have the difficulties because every time we want to fight, because we've got, it's not just the prisoners like in Mississippi, we have juvenile offenders that we have to have special prisons for. And the mental issues, now we closed the mental facilities, so now we have, we have to deal with the mental health issues. And so we don't have facilities anymore because we closed them down. And now it costs, like I say, a million dollars a gallon in our creative system.
We do not need to build any more Taj Mahals for prisoners.
I agree with you, but my opinion is kind of my own opinion.
Heather, a lot of people know where we are ascending our prisoners in New York. A lot of the female prisoners, because it's overcrowded, are ascending to New York. My question is, with the continuing New York prisoners being, New York prisons being closed, what are they going to do about it? They can't release bunches of serious crimes people, you know, kill or whatever, release someone that are not stable for the community.
I know nothing about New York prisons, and I have little information that any of our women prisoners are going to New York. We have a Vermont women's facility. That's where I started. Thanks a lot, folks.
All right, I have the totals of the vote. We gave Shelley calculated, then for the rest of the least calculated, and then you just give a hundred and forty-eight total votes. Seventy-nine votes for yes and sixty-nine votes for no. So the question, the shell voters of the town of Highgate and all the questions and budgets by Australian dollars, it is a yes in the poll. All right, we're going to move on to Article Seven. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate give approval for the village wastewater construction and authorize general fund expenditures up to two-hundred-thousand dollars to be paid towards the total project costs of four billion dollars? What about a motion? Second. Discussion. Mr. Maslow.
I understand that this town wants to move on. They want to expand, they want to grow, and they feel that this is part of this. But I have a couple of issues. One of them being just talking to our state legislator about the cost of property taxes in this town, and he wants to slap another two-hundred-thousand-plus on top of it. That's my one comment. The other one is, there's no guarantee in this that the people in the town of Highgate are going to sign up for this. There's no way you can force them. You already have existing systems. And as far as I know, no one has reported that they're failing. So we're doing this because we want to bring in a senior housing? Because I don't see what's going to benefit, and it definitely isn't going to benefit the whole town. This is only going to benefit the center if it even benefits the center.
I'd like to answer Zed's question or statement. I do believe, I'm on the bill's guard. I do believe this is a recommendation we put forward that has merit. I do think it'll benefit the town. There is tax revenue that will come in, and we've actually had a lot of interest from town people. This is not a forced thing. If people want to get on it, they can. At the same time, though, we have had interest from businesses, Cathedral Square showed interest, and we've had some residents show interest. To the point that our original design, we were going to do the smallest possible. We've already bumped it up to the biggest possible because of the van�.
I'm a little bit opposed to that, that kind of system they put in. I believe the town of Highgate needs a sewer system, but not this one. This one is one setup that will fail, and we will pay sooner or later on it. And any mountain system is filtered. And I feel strongly about, if we're going to do something, do it right. And I think the whole town, if we go to a sewer system, has to be like a real sewer. It takes, handles the hard stuff, and then we start to have one system. And what's going to happen, once you get that system in, you're going to have one side on the other side, and you're going to be needing one on the other side. That other side are not paying for the system that they put in now. What I understand, none of the people that are going to be on this system right now are not going to pay. And I know R. L. Valley is probably one of the richest people in the state. And if he wants that system to put in, let him put it in, and y'all. That's my opinion.
Some of that's incorrect. The passing of this water system, wastewater system, will let the elderly housing come in. They'll be interested when that occurred. The revenue from the elderly housing is not a town-only thing. It'd be a private business. Number one, they're going to pay for the land. Number two, they're going to supply taxes to the town. They have a very similar unit in South Herald that turns the town of South Herald forty-seven thousand dollars.
A year.
That's not a losing profit decision in that case. And in five to six years, all the investments Highgate has put into that problem will be paid back. The wastewater system has to go in for them to come in. And anybody who looks up to that wastewater system will not be booked up for free. There's going to be charges, there's going to be gallon usage. That's what's going to be regulated on. So they aren't booked up for free. And if Mr. Rayville thinks that this system will fail, if you don't even have this system in, you won't get the next one. This is four-million-dollar grant that we're going to supply a hundred, two-hundred-thousand dollars of it. This is a one-time thing, it's going to be done, what year? What year does this have to be done?
Twenty twenty-six.
Okay. So here's an opportunity to do something in the center of town or like something like, we'll turn it into a park. Because that's really an opportunity.
First of all, for the people who don't know, the community that retirement thing is not for just Highgate residents. Anybody in the area, there's a hundred and thirty-three people that can base that already want to get into that place. So if you think that you're a resident in Highgate and you're going to get in there, you're not. Second of all, it's nice to be the front of the picket and have the lipstick if you live in the center of town. But if you live where I live, all your waste is going into my backyard. And you can shake your head no all you want, but the last time I was there, they hit water, the water came down twenty feet. They're planning on digging a ditch and putting pipe at eighteen inches, and then it tapers down, so you get rid of the waste. The problem with that is, on one end of that area, there's a brook. On the other side of that area, there's a river. On the other two sides of that area, there's people who wells. If this is so great, let's put a mountain system and put it in your backyard.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe someone can clarify. Someone.
Your reminder.
It's, okay. Maybe someone can explain where the area we're talking about is? Because that's what I was wondering. I had asked, and they said it was the sand pit across from the cemetery? Is that where, because I don't know if everybody knows where you're talking. And also, the second part of my question is, go over like the upkeep of it, how much it will be a year?
Okay, I'll start with the first part. It's located, and I'll use some help on the second part. But the first part, it's located on Franklin Street in Roger Wright's sand pit, after the church. I think it's, people drive ways down to the dock. And we purchased eighteen acres from Roger Wright's.
To answer the second part of that question, maintenance-wise, I mean, I can't give an exact amount, but it's a very, very simple system. It's a traditional leach field. There is going to be some pumps to move all the black water from the town down to that area. That would be the maintenance, is a pump plant or something like that. There is inspection fees, permits, and whatnot. But the actual system is very simple. It's all gravy.
The other thing, the other thing to recognize with this is, the state is not going to let the town put in something that endangers its residents. They're not going to give us permits for a system that might interfere with your water, your septic, or any quality of your life. They are extremely stringent. Mr. Wetherby has met with three of the engineers from the state. Their science is pretty particular. If we can't meet the goals of that testing, then we can't go forward. So this isn't a willy-nilly system. The system is what they call drip irrigation, which is basically a giant leach field. It will take water from your septic, not the solids, just the water, and then it will bring it to a sand base, and then it drizzles down through the sand in order to purify, just like the leach field at your homes. One of the big benefits to this is this system allows us to develop the Meche property, or the Village Core property, as we call it now. The Village Core property and all the investigations and studies that have been done on that property show us that without doing a wastewater system, you can't put anything there and protect the neighbors that have already lived there. Their wells are already too close. Their septic systems are too close. They would not meet the state standards that currently are in place. So to fix that issue, this became a priority. We put this through lots of study. We've had tremendous amount of meetings. We've met with too many engineers to mention, and too many studies, and too many permits. But it all is for one goal, to have a beautiful and vibrant downtown. Part of that is Cathedral Square, which is thirty units of senior housing. That's thirty units of clean, secure housing of a mixed income that allows us to gain property taxes. That forty-seven thousand dollars that Richard talked about, that's what South Herald gets for the same size building. Forty-seven thousand dollars of extra tax money toward the toll tax bill in the town of Highgate. That's forty-seven thousand dollars that you and I don't have to pay. I know that taxes are not going to go down in Highgate for expenses. It's not going to get any cheaper to pave the roads. It's not going to get any cheaper to plow the road. It's not going to get any cheaper for gravel. It's probably not going to get any cheaper for Wendy or Shelley or I. So what do you do? You have to have an option. And what the select board has chosen to support is to look for businesses that will bring money into the town. Cathedral Square is one of those people. In order to get them to come, we need to have viable wastewater, the same as if we were to build a new post office, same if we were to put a restaurant or cafe there, same if we want to do anything there. We have the benefit of being able to expand it a little more than we currently, we originally expected. That's great. That means we can also allow that benefit to town residents. So we have had interest from residents who want to hook up to a system already. Our engineer has gone through different studies. Based on what we are putting together, the maintenance on the system will be supported by the cost to the people that are on that system. So it should be a self-fulfilling maintenance. It shouldn't cost the taxpayer anything actually. Yes, we're looking at two-hundred-thousand dollars. But if you vote yes on the next article, you can take that hundred-thousand dollars and put it against the wastewater. Now you're down to a hundred-thousand dollars. And I'll tell you what. I'll try my best to get that hundred-thousand dollars down to zero dollars. I'll write as many grants as I can, I'll beg, I borrow, I plead, I'll get on my knees, try to get that to be zero dollars. I can't guarantee it, but I'll do my damnedest.
John, John Reagan, I put a lot on those mountain system, man. They're bullshit. Everyone, easiest way, not have that coming down, it's about everything.
I'm just curious how one of those two-hundred-thousand came from? Because I was at the meeting when this task to put the septic in, that it was going to be free, free, free. It was pretty, it's going to cost the taxpayers anything. So I want to know where this two-hundred is coming from? And if it took. Should be two-hundred.
I missed the end of what you said. Where?
Then we should, if it's going to cost two-hundred-thousand, then the next article should be two-hundred-thousand for sale. So it doesn't cost us anything because we're free, free, free.
I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. I know that they're connected.
I know that they're connected, but I think that we should focus on the wastewater now and then go to the senior housing after. But I think that how it started with the free, free, free was when we started with the smaller system that Chris spoke to earlier. And when we first brought that up and we talked to the residents in town, we talked to the businesses in town, there was so much interest that that smaller system that we had proposed was already over capacity. So with the grants that Sharon has found and that are available right now, the board decided, the Village Core, that we would propose to the people of ID at town meeting today that rather than starting with the smaller system we'd initially looked at, that instead, we go to that larger system. So that means that it's not free, free, free anymore. But we can get a several million dollar system for at most $200,000. And I don't think that you're going to find a deal like that anywhere else. And I don't think that we will find that with this system ever again.
I don't know if anybody can answer this question, but if you have a septic system, or is anybody talking about having a water system for the town core?
Yes, by law, we do have to supply a water system. And as of right now, we will be tying in with the arena water well because it has plenty of capacity and it's the closest water source.
What, what, what source?
The arena's water. So it's still town-owned, and it'll benefit the nation property.
And it has the capacity?
Yes, easily.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Hi, Tal, let me one again. I want to know if this system passes. How's it going to be maintained? Who's going to be keeping an eye on it to make sure it's working? Because I'm going to tell you something right now. Highgate push for sidewalks in Highgate, and I'll tell you, they're not maintained very well. Come to Langton Street sometime when they're not plowed, they're full of ice, and they're underwater. So is this how the sewer system's going to be maintained?
So this is a closed, what they call a closed system. The minimum, the maintenance is minimal. Things that can be done by someone on our public works department if it requires a yearly check to be done by a registered engineer. But at this time, those costs should be covered by those that use the system.
I just want to know, how many people in the town have a filter system on the septic tanks? If you don't, you can't answer this. Because you're going to have solids getting in there very often.
Any other discussion?
How many?
Yes, sir.
If you have sewer coming over on the Langton Street, why is it you don't have the water coming over the Langton Street?
The water will be needed for the Village Core property. So the water would be coming, at this point, like Chris said, from the arena over to service the Village Core property.
So if you, if you continue any of our drinking water with this process, we don't get any fresh water from the town. We just have to put up. That sounds fair to everybody?
If anybody's well is contaminated from this, which after we have gone through all of the testing that we've been doing, and all of the testing and permitting that we will have to do before we can move forward and break ground on this project, you're able to sue for that. I mean, that's, that is what it comes down to. But that's why we're doing all of this legwork and why we will continue to do the legwork that is necessary for this to be approved.
But talking with the engineers, the Act 250 people, they're absolutely right. This is testing. There's no guarantees. It's a lot easier to ask for forgiveness than it is permission.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I heard that the, I'm building housing. It was going to be a three-story building. And that is for Highgate residents, but also others. I also, you know, I read on Facebook about how they were concerned about addressing farmers, right? And then, you know, one spouse, pastor, whatever. So, also, I was hoping that was section eight. So I'm just curious, a couple of questions actually. Does it have to be in the town? And I know a few years ago, there was some mention of permitting Cassidy property and for building housing.
And we, we're on Article 7, so.
I know, but I was saying.
We gotta say germane is to the article, okay? You can speak at the next, in the next article on, on the. Is there any other discussion?
I'll be loud. I want to make a motion that we move this question to paper ballot.
We have a second. We have a second. We have, we have a motion for a hand a second. I, I can't really move this unless seven people stand up. I'm just kind of giving a hint there. Okay, we have seven people. So we're moving to paper ballot and we vote on it. All in favor of moving this to a paper ballot?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I have a few paper ballot. Ladies and gentlemen, Article 3B, Article 7. So it's freshly signed. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate get approval for the village wastewater construction and authorize general fund expenditures up to $200,000 to be paid towards the total project cost of $4 million? There was 152 voters, 100 yeses and 52 no's. All right, Article A. Shall the voters of the town of Highgate get approval for the town to sell one plus or minus acres of land from the Village Core properties to Cathedral Square, a nonprofit corporation, for the express purpose of developing senior housing in the amount of 100,000 homes? Have a motion, we have a second. Now, let's begin the discussion. Mrs. Ralston, you're the first one to speak, because I cut it off last time.
Okay, let's see. It asks me, Robby. Here's my question, was, does it have to be in my name? That's the first question. And then, I know a few years back, somebody was looking at permitting Cassidy property. And I know somebody who stayed up there, so they answered the questions that we had. And also, I spoke to somebody, Sharon. I guess the urgent people to sign up now, they have 12 out of the 31 units, I guess, that's going to be in. And this cathedral organization's from Burlington. So, this is my third question. So, they have a large waiting list. Are those people, they're sanctuary city? Are those people going to come here to Highgate and then the town turns into a sanctuary town? Just, you can foresee the future, but I'm still concerned. Because things can change quick. And that's it.
I'm going to let Richard answer that.
Okay, the, your first question was that, why, why in Highgate, why over here? We looked at it, the, the core property over here, and it's close to the everything, the Zorasees Church, and walking distance. That was one of the reasons. The reasons are, the Cassidy property, that, that had nothing to do with the town. And I, I don't, we don't know what happened. But that's, that's nothing to do with the town. So, that's, that's where we are there. What was your other question that you?
Just my concern for anybody, if this was to become a sanctuary town, like Burlington.
Okay, I, I don't, Sharon, you want to talk about that one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is Ralston's correct. We can't guarantee that all of the residents that want to go in Highgate, that want to go into the senior housing in Highgate will be able to get in. Because this project is federal funds, law requires that that eligibility be open to all peoples. It's a mixed income, independent living, 55 years and up. Mixed income means that not all of the residents will pay the same amount of rent. So, some will pay full rent. They may pay just a little bit below market price, which unfortunately, in Frankel County, is ridiculous. There'll also be some that have some assistance from federal funding that only pay 30% of the market rent. Then there are some, and I know she mentioned the word section eight. We all have a bad taste in our mouth when we talk about section eight, but we have to remember that we're agricultural town. And it wasn't that long ago when small farms were probably here that a lot of farm families didn't put away for social security like you do now if you work for the government or you work for local families or somewhere like Myland. These people had to work hard for a living. They worked seven days a week, 24 hours a day. But they don't have much income in their retirement to show for it. So those people also might be considered section eight. It just means that they weren't fortunate enough to be able to put a lot of income into their social security when they have the, when they have the opportunity. So, this will be not a sanctuary city. We hope this will be the place where our friends, neighbors, and family stay in our community.
Is that, glad, sir?
I just want to say to everybody here now that I'm totally against this. And I'll just start by, our town policies and procedures, when we keep buying property for $250,000 and we turn around and sell it for $100,000. So there goes three years of our $47,000 taxes per year that we got to, we got to recoup because we spent $250,000 for the property. And number two, there's no guarantees that our people in this town are going to be able to live there. We, we could have homeless from Burlington living there because of the, because of the stipulations that are put upon us by the state and federal government. I, I, I fail to see the benefit of it at all. I do. That's all I can say.
Hold on, gentlemen, in the back, you had your hand up, so. Yes, you're next. Yes, you can respond to the.
I'm glad that Zeb asked the question or made a statement about purchasing that property for more than we're selling it for, because I have answered that question privately to other people here. And I think that it is good for everyone to know that we, what's on the ballot right here is to sell a portion of that property for $100,000. There are still four lots that would be left after this that we could also sell and that we would hope to be able to sell to bring more tax revenue into the town.
Just say, I thought the gentleman you spoke to a while ago. And also, the way you said, talking about farmers and glowing. I'm a farmer, I'm a farmer all my life. And I understand what you're saying. And it seems as though you're playing on the idea, the motion for local people, not that way ups and downs to my own. But you're just saying that about us, but at the same time, you're saying that this is going to be open. We're not, it may not be Highgate separately. They will be able to live there. So the back and forth, it's, it's almost like you're telling us, well, yeah, it's available to us. And you're using farmers as an example. But then you're also saying, Highgate people are not be able to live there. I'm getting kind of mid-sentence here. That's all I can say.
There's a waiting list?
Excuse me, you were not answering, Mr. Ralston.
I just want a clarification on who had the first eligibility in senior housing? The Eric Campbell or the?
There's a waiting, there's a waiting list for this property right now with Cathedral Square. How this works, because it's federally funded, like Sharon had stated, is that we can't exclude anybody from that. So that also means that we can't have it be open to only Highgate residents. So how Cathedral Square is, I guess I can loosely use the term marketing this right now, is that they've started this waiting list. They've been to several meetings in town. And I will tell you all again here today that if you would like your name on that waiting list, call them up. Get your name on the waiting list. There's only a dozen-ish names on that list right now. And they start at the top of that waiting list. And they go down through that list when they have this bill to see who can move in. So if it's something that you're interested in, get your name on the list. Once they get farther down this process, they're going to advertise it more broadly across the state. And then in Highgate, we'll lose that priority that they have right now since they're just advertising it locally.
Hello? Okay, wanted to make sure it was on. It's going to be out of our control if that is sold to Cathedral Square. That is totally, the building will be in their control.
If, if twenty years down the road, they decide they're gonna sell it, and they can sell it to whoever they wanna sell it to. I mean, it's not gonna be any guarantee that that's always gonna be senior housing. It could be low income, it could be whatever anybody wants it to be. I don't agree that it should be right in the village. It should be outside the village. It's too close to the school.
So my question is, is it in-house managed, senior housing? Like, is there somebody on the property managing it? Of course, the reason I ask that is because we work for a couple of these companies, and Grandma and Grandpa, they'd like their grandchildren to live there when no one's buying closed doors. Nice to know it's not three people in a house, it's six people in a house, and they're all ages of fifty-five or community, or that'll become, say, chaos of children and stuff.
Any other discussion?
So Cathedral Square is in-house managed. They pride themselves on being the gold standard in senior housing in Vermont. They offer programs like what they call SASH, which is, uh, support services for independent living seniors that offers them the ability to live independently longer. So they want to help you to stay independent as long as possible. They also are very particular about their rules and regulations. They will evict you if you don't follow the rules. So if four grandchildren move in, it's very likely you will lose your spot in that housing. They will not allow that. They wanna keep their reputation. You look at some of the different senior housings that are in Vermont, some are disgusting. Some people don't have, you know, just the basic services. It's unfortunate. Cathedral and Square is not one of those people. These people give a damn about their residents. They want to see your family succeed. They want you to go forward. Part of this, the gentleman said earlier that we talk about emotions. Part of this is emotional. And part of it's just financial. Expenses don't go down, so you have to have a plan. Plan is, you have to bring in money to the tax base and the grand list. This is a way to do that.
I've been volunteered to explain this. So the idea that they're proposing is it would be a thirty-unit, uh, building. Four would be two-bedroom, twenty-six would be, uh, single-bedroom. As Sharon explained, it do have in-house services and whatnot, but at the end of the day, it's senior housing. It's not a system. Uh, they do have parking underneath, that's why it's a three-story building. Two stories of living, parking underneath. I don't, I think it was twenty-one or twenty-two sites were underneath, the rest would be outdoors. They want enough land that they could have some green space. We actually thought being next to school was a good thing for outreach with our young students here, with the seniors living there. While, if Cathedral was granted to buy it, while they own it, they can't turn it into something else. It has to remain fifty-five plus. As far as them selling it fifty years down the road, there's no guarantees that anybody that owns the property will sell it. So that one we can't guarantee against.
You actually just touched on my question. About selling it fifty years down the road, how about three months down the road when somebody offers them more money? Are they gonna be contracted to the town to build this? Or three months down the road when somebody says, hey, I'll give you a hundred seventy-five or they need some help and not build?
I don't believe they can. That is not your violence. Because of the way they get their state private funding and whatnot, they are not allowed. They're a nonprofit. They can't sell it for a while.
But they couldn't sell it three months down the road?
But even if somebody else bought it, it would still have to go through the development review board, which the town still has some say in.
Any, any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, one more time.
One more time, last time. Now, in article before, we needed two-hundred thousand in order, for them to build over there. Why didn't we throw a two-hundred-thousand-dollar price tag on this Meishy property? Then it'd be free to back there.
But the lady spoke over there, it's only one lot that they're selling. There's still other three or lots that wouldn't be sold. Okay, so I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong on this, is we, we bought the whole property. It was one price. Now we subdivided it, and we're gonna try to make more money than what we paid for. Is that correct? You understand where we're going? Yes, ma'am.
So how much land is actually going to be sold to them? What, what is the amount?
One plus or minus acre. Okay.
So they're gonna have to subdivide because the Meishy property is one acre, and the rest of it is point-six-eight acres, I believe? So there gonna be a subdivision required for this?
Yes, there is.
Okay, so who's gonna pay for the subdivision? Cathedral Square?
So, yes, um... Now, I kinda lost my train of thought, but sorry about that. So, yes, the property will be subdivided. It's not subdivided now because we're waiting for Bernard Jarvis to finish the boundary survey. Because there was a question about where the boundary was on the small-town law that was, uh, donated to the town. So once that survey is in place, know exactly what our boundary lines are. What we'd like to do is give Cathedral Square that one acre plus or minus, and that's why we put plus or minus, was just because we don't have the exact boundary lines yet, to give them that subdivision. The subdivision, uh, will also include subdivision of other lots off that property. Subdivision process will be fairly cheap, um, and fairly straightforward. So whether Cathedral Square pays for that subdivision or the town pays for the subdivision of the entire lot is a minimum cost.
Who set the price at? Who set the price at a hundred thousand dollars? Did you have a pricer come in, real estate agent? How was the price set at a hundred thousand dollars?
No, the hundred thousand dollars was, uh, proposed, and we accepted it. Based on the vote that we're doing today.
Israel?
Of the land that's remaining, how much of that... So on the land that's remaining, not going to Cathedral, if we approve this, how much capacity is left on the giant leach field? Federal ones, you're explaining in terms of federal ones.
So I guess I'm not sure of your question.
If that's a thirty bedroom, a thirty-unit building, how much of the leach field include the market seven is left for the other streets? Is there any on that leach field?
Yes, so originally, we had set aside sixty-five hundred gallons per day for the entire Meishy property, um, including the school lot and the town lot. So the village core property. Senior housing will up that slightly, but not by much. It's all in the wastewater regulation through the state. If you don't know senior housing there, we still have set aside sixty-five hundred gallons for that property.
I believe you're also asking the total capacity of the entire leach field. I believe that if we are, we can do the entire spec pro-size leach field we're talking, if, you know, all permitting and everything goes through. I believe it's twenty thousand gallons a day is the full leach field, correct? It's twenty to thirty on the, uh, full leach field. If we develop the entire Meishy property, our original spec of sixty-five hundred gallons, just for developing a Meishy property, the NATO property, is like, you'd leave fourteen to, uh, fourteen to twenty-four thousand more gallons capacity.
Is there any other discussion?
I just wanted to know if the building that's there is gonna be torn down? Because we still don't know that, right?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, we don't know that's not, we don't know that's not part of the law we're trying to sell today. That's another vote down there.
Bear up then.
Sharon was just saying that she wasn't sure or didn't have the dimensions. So my question is, if Cathedral needs more land to expand, whether it be the apartment lot or the building itself, are we just gonna write that to them or are we gonna go back? You know what I'm saying? Is it a set? Is it a set, um, one acre?
It's a set plus or minus one acre. It just, it means that plus or minus depending on how this draw, is drawn out. It doesn't mean it's gonna go up to an acre and a half or two acres.
So as I, my understanding, we're gonna put this place in to revitalize the town. We're not going to tear down the Meishy property, the housing?
The lot that we are looking at to put this senior housing on is in the back of that lot, more towards the school. So right now, we are not talking about any lots that are on the front, right along Route Seventy-Eight. When we get to that point, that will be another vote by Australian ballot.
So to finish up, if we're talking about revitalizing the property, shouldn't we stipulate that that building be tore down? What good is the senior housing if you've got an old, an old house that's not fit to live in? And you're still looking at that for, until we decide we're gonna vote Australian ballot again to get rid of it?
As far as the Meishy property house, that is, uh, if somebody wanted to buy it and renovate it and put a business in there, that's their burden. But this is not the land that we're voting on right now, and this article is not part of that. This is the first step. You have to start somewhere.
Mr. Rizzo?
Move the motion.
Uh, my understanding, there's gonna be thirty lots from Cathedral Square. I mean, per units. Now, uh, it don't sound like enough to me. I think there's thirty people in Highgate that would probably use it. Will they be able to expand? You have four other lots. Will they be able to expand if they are doing good and people, they need more for Highgate residents? I know they're not gonna be able to, same just for Highgate residents only, but, uh, will there be other lots available there that they can expand?
From the presentations I've seen from Cathedral Square, this is the size building they're like to build. All of their buildings, for the most part, are the size. They're putting one up in St. Albans. They could have one or two more units, and that's even St. Albans. But I think we will fund it.
We mentioned in the previous article about water. Is it, one, when was it decided to use the, the wrecked property well? And two, is that a done deal?
So, when the studies were being done to look at a water source, we, of course, looked at the municipal water sources first. The municipal water source had the town building and this old water service at the wreck department. The wreck department has a sixty-gallon in its well, which is awesome. It has the ability to put that water supply for additional level. It also is already under a stringent testing policy. So of the options that we had available without drilling the well, I was chosen. Is it a done deal? Nothing's ever a done deal, you know? It could happen that something happens and it's polluted or, or whatever. But, yes, that's the plan at this point.
Hello, I just wanna know how they're gonna guarantee us that they're not gonna have everybody in it with section eight? How are they gonna get the people to pay full price when you know that the people are interested? And then my hat is, if they don't make that, remember that they want to keep the building up?
All right, you wanna speak?
Move it.
So the rates that people pay are determined by their income? So you can't just say, I only want to pay the thirty percent rate? That's not how it works. And I, I think that you had one more question that I forgot.
I understand that, but if you always pay full price and then the people are paying thirty percent, why would I wanna do that? I would decide to live there, and then you're only gonna have empty lots, and people are paying, you're only gonna get section eight housing, and then all the people are paying the thirty percent. How are you gonna get people that are gonna pay a hundred percent?
So this is how all of their properties are structured, and it has worked very well for them.
But we're a small community. We have a lot of people, and it's all a lot of mountains. Burlington had a lot of people, like, extremely large underground, and we're gonna bring them in.
I think some of the other places where they have, these are also smaller communities. Some of them are larger communities, like in Chittenden County. But they have an extensive waiting list for these units all across the state. I think that the waiting list for all of their properties is in excess of a thousand people. And I think that we all know that there is a huge need for housing, especially senior housing. And that's why we are looking at putting this on this property when we've had a lot of meetings, we've held charrettes, we have invited people so many times to come and see, what do we want on that Meishy property? And I think, as someone that's been on this committee for quite a while, I was surprised... I was surprised that senior housing is something that came up over and over again. It wasn't something that we were initially thinking about. But when it kept rising to the top every time that we would ask people what we wanted on that Meishy property, that's how we ended up where we are today.
Move the motion, please.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, move the vote, please.
Do I got a second? I'm going to read the article again before we vote. Now, the voters of the town of Higgy give approval for the town to sell one plus or minus acres of land from the village core property to Cathedral Square Square, a nonprofit corporation for the express purpose of developing senior housing in the amount of $100,000. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have. All right, we're going to move on to Article 9. All right, um, let's have made a motion to adjourn. For how long are you looking at? 30 minutes? Do I have a second? Okay, order the line first, please. We'll leave you on your second. All right, moving on. Okay, order the line. Shall the voters of the town of Higgy appropriate $5,000 to assist with the moving expenses associated with the relocation of the Franklin County Field Days? Motion? Second. Any discussion?
I just want to know, do they have a new site yet to where they want to move this to?
No, sir. No, they don't. As of right now, we don't have a new site.
Move the motion.
What's the purpose of giving your $5,000 to him when you've got no place to move to? I'm not, I'm Richard, I'm not picking on you, I swear, I'm not. I'm just trying to make sense of this. Keith, you want to answer this one?
Thank you, Richard. One of the, one of the things is, State of Vermont, I don't hear a microphone. State of Vermont, completely blowing yourself.
Our phone works now, unless you shut off.
Thank you. Well, the State of Vermont has said this will be our last year at the site we're at now. We have looked at numerous sites so far, and as of yesterday, there's still two more sites that we are looking at in the state of Franklin County. If we find a site the state is willing to help us move, it's going to take a lot to move. We need to know whether it's feasible to lease a building there and move. There's been, I don't know how many thousands of state dollars that's been put in there that grants that we have gotten. This is all in anticipation of moving. That's all I can tell you. But we do have a site that we are still looking at, I think. I think it's two of them, if I'm correct. That's the best I can tell you of this one.
Keith, he had the question of, why, why do we want $5,000?
Because all the money that's put into Field Days, each year we get, we don't get a heck of a lot. When it's all said and done, it's around $20,000, I think, isn't it? Somebody else can help me out there. It's about $20,000 profit we make. All our money goes right back into the Field Days.
What other towns have been asked to put money forward, and how much money were they asked for?
Each town was asked to say.
Say your thing.
So each town was asked to pony up five grand to break a deal. This man.
Hi, I'm Casey. The question that I have is, just for clarity's sake, let's say no viable site is found, what happens to the $5,000? That's my question.
If a site is found, we will have to take down all the stuff. And the way I'm understanding, that, that money will help us move and get set back up again. Because it's going to take quite a bit to set it back up again.
Oh, sorry, the question was if there was a viable site now.
No, set, set.
Yeah.
That's, that's a good question. I, I think, I don't know. Keith, you don't have an answer yet?
I don't know a lot of answers to that question yet.
Does he just go back into the budget?
I, I don't think we collect it from the town if we don't have a site.
Correct.
That's my anticipation of it.
That answers your question. Thank you.
Does the Franklin County Field Days own all those buildings?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So those, those buildings are going to have to be torn down?
Yes.
And rebuilt?
Yes.
Okay.
FAA pusher on the airport. FAA is a pusher on the airport. You know what they gave us for a reason? Because we have such a large crowd of people there. If there was ever an airplane that had problems, look at all the people get hurt. Yeah, for four days a year. They didn't say anything about the thousand they're over on the school. But this is the reason the federal government threw down on us.
My question is, just thinking, still need a lot more money involved. There's a lot of rules when it comes to the ground statutes as far as moving stuff for a new field location. But my suggestion is, how do you put it, the donation box? You got 80,000 people there.
You know, I guess, I guess the biggest thing I want to say is, we, Field Days came to us, and they want it, so we want, we brought it to you people. Right now, we don't have, there's a couple of us that are not bored going to here right now, but we don't have, what do you say, the chairman, the higher up directors in here. So I think a lot of those questions should be forgotten to them. Because we just, maybe, the Field Days brought it to us, and we did, and we're bringing it to you. Because we thought, I love you all.
Who are the Field Days directors? I guess, since you guys have been answering questions, I assumed that you were. Did they put this on the ballot, and there's another one from Field Days here?
There, there's just two. I don't think, as far as directors here right now, there's just two here. And we're not, we're newly directed. We're not, you know, we moved up. Okay? Also that. We had that. Keith, do you have anything to say on that?
No, except, I know our, our president wasn't able to be with us today. He's the one that's got a lot of the answers, and our treasurer secretary wasn't able to be here. I just want to say we're having a lot of discussion on $5,000.
Move the motion.
I'm going to give back the five grand. Move it to vote. I'll try to amend it to 10.
Second. I'm going to read the article again. Shall the voters of the town of Higgy appropriate $5,000 to assist with the moving expenses associated with the relocation of the Franklin County Field Days? All in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It's like the ayes have. Article 10. Shall the voters of the town of Higgy appropriate $585,000 to meet the expenses and liabilities of the capital improvement plan with an estimated $485,000 to be raised by taxes? Has a motion? Discussion? This is discussion. You ask the questions? You asking the question?
I want to hear from somebody to know what's going on. Is there a reason why a capital improvement's gone down or gone up? Or what are we buying? Are we allowed to ask those questions anymore? We just have a capital improvement plan, and we deal with whatever you buy?
All right, you're pulling along the top page, you're on line. Okay, so they're asking for $90,000 for the park and wreck department? Actually, I don't have that number in front of me. Do you have that number somewhere in the meeting? Thank you. I think it's $50,000 in the library relocation. Hopefully, they can relocate.
Obviously, they, yeah, four. Because it's all, all of them left here.
Wreck last year was $68,000, this year is $90,000. Everybody, can everybody hear now?
No.
So last year, the wreck was $62,000, this year is $90,000. Highlights, they're doing $10,000 for the Zaboni. $10,000 for the rear roof. Sorry, sorry, $10,000 for the parking lot, $25,000 for the roof, $5,000 for a zero turn mower, $10,000 for the dehumidifier, and $30,000 for the chiller. $50,000 was for library relocation. And where they moving, not sure, same as last year. The Highgate Mall to the Friday Park bit, it's $130,000. $85,000 last year. Highlights, $15,000 towards the 2021 fire engine, $30,000 towards the 2006 fire engine, $75,000 towards their tanker, which is the 1998, and $10,000 for to eventually replace the utility truck. Yes.
Why did the library get locked in the CIP?
The library has been in the CIP. The relocation started last year, believe? 2017. I can't answer that question.
The capital improvement plan, I'm going to get away from these first. So the capital improvement plan, ZEB, is basically an expense that is more than $5,000, and will take you more than one year to save up to make that expense happen. So it can be infrastructure, vehicles, buildings, things of that nature.
I just want to say, folks, I think it's no wonder why we put a beauty question. The CIP, I never wanted to get into it, but now that we locked it, it seems like we're locking everything in here. Libraries should be under the library. I understand the fire department and the town, and even the wreck department. They're supposed to, and use that, that require equipment replaced, plus the libraries should be under the library. It shouldn't be in the CIP.
Says ZEB. Okay, the Public Works Highway, the total is $205,000. $185,000 last year. Highlights on that was, sorry, $10,000 towards the 91 Caterpillar Raider, $10,000 towards the 2001 loader, $10,000 towards the 2004 Bacchanal, $100,000 towards the 2014 Western Star, which is a tandem, $20,000 towards F-550 compact truck with plow, say 30, $15,000 towards 2016 international tandem truck, and $30,000 towards 2020 international tandem, and $10,000 for the Dismore. $26,000, yes. And then they've got the in and around town projects, there's $110,000. $75,000 last year. Highlights are the class three road improvements for $50,000. Trains for station sculpt civilization phase two, $25,000. Meishy Roadslide, $5,000. The Village Core Mac play, $30,000. Is there any other discussion on this article? Or anything in there that you want an answer to? All right, sir. I don't need a big answer, I'm just curious, how does it feel to slide? I'm going to be rude to my heart, it's going to be so nice.
It's not a good one. I'm going to play it right now. It's getting worse. We, I talked to Sharon a couple weeks ago, and we looked at some new engineers. So they're going to look it over, and they're saying things that, like, they interest us, that maybe it's time to try something different. And so... And so we are gonna go with these new engineers and talk it over and next time we'll probably have more answers for you.
Yeah. All right, is there any other discussion? Yes.
Claude Travalier, yeah, page fifty-five, I think is a breakdown of what you just described on, on that other page. And I just want to understand revenue versus expenditures. It looks like the revenue is all tax money that we just talked about. Is that correct? The top, the top of the page says revenue, the bottom of the page says expenditures, but the revenue is just tax money. It's not like income, right?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? No discussion, we will vote on the article and shall we? Shall, shall the voters of the town of Hy-Vee appropriate five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to meet the expenses and liabilities of the capital improvement plan with an estimated four hundred eighty-five thousand to be raised by taxes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, let's move on to article eleven. We're almost there. Shall the voters of the town of Hy-Vee appropriate one million, sixty thousand, one hundred and thirty more dollars to meet the expenses and liabilities of the Hy-Vee Fund with an estimated eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty more dollars to be raised by taxes? You have no? End second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Public Works is your highway. Yes, Senator.
So since we didn't do any paving last year, are we getting the same amount of paving this year or is the cost difference in making any difference?
I'm gonna have a, Shelby, actually, I have a question.
I don't know, uh, if Nick has talked with Pike about the contract that was signed last year. I would assume they would honor their pricing. They did overbook their schedule, they did not make it to Hy-Vee. So that paving, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, is still happening on top of this fiscal years. So we will do a June, July paving to do both fiscal years at the same time.
Do you have a dollar amount or a mile amount?
Hello?
Yeah.
We typically pave about a mile and a half a year, so three miles-ish.
I guess I'm not asking you, was the contract for X, Y, Z or was it for X amount of dollars?
Last year's contract was for both. X, Y, Z at this amount of dollars. I don't have that off the top of my head. I know a portion of the Meishu Road from the bridge to, uh, the Young House was on that. Um, it looks like Nick's gonna look it up. St. Armond Road, Rainville Road, Dirkie Road, Meishu Road, and then, uh, when this budget passes, they will renegotiate the new paving. And just for pricing, uh, St. Armond is gonna cost a hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifty, ten cents. Rainville Road, fifty-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine, sixty cents. Dirkie Road, thirty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Meishu Road, one hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents. And the price does not go down.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? No discussion, I will read the article before we vote on it again. Shall the voters of the town of Hy-Vee appropriate one million, sixty thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars to meet the expenses and liabilities of the Hy-Vee Fund with an estimated eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars to be raised by taxes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
It's got more.
Almost there. Article twelve. Shall the voters of the town of Hy-Vee appropriate one million, four hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars to meet the expenses and liabilities of the general fund with an estimated seven hundred and seven thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars to be raised by taxes? I have a motion. End second. Discussion? Go ahead, Senator.
I'm just kind of curious why, uh, before we voted for article seven, that it was only, the, uh, initial estimate was cut high. It was one point four million, they were only asking seven oh seven before we voted in article seven. Where, where would the reduction be?
Revenue that's not taxpayer dollars.
Okay, so that was going to grant you something?
So the total budget is one point four million, but we have other revenues such as the cell tower lease, Cosella, their transfer station lease, all of that revenue offsets taxpayer dollars. So we only need to collect, only, seven hundred if for taxes, yes, so that's why, it is lower.
Uh, could you explain on the forty-seven, the dispatching fees difference?
Yes.
Yes.
Mississauga Valley Rescue has immediately switched services from Middlebury Dispatch to St. Alton City Dispatch, and we had no choice. It was none of choice of ours. And that contract started January first. So we will be over our budget this fiscal year for it and, uh, had to raise more money for next fiscal year to cover the costs.
And we were just surprised, as you guys are hearing now, we questioned them afterwards, I mean, that they were mad and strongly disagreed with the way that that whole process happened.
The microphone.
Because we should have had some.
Microphone's gone.
That, as I said before, that we were surprised with the way that happened. Um, we didn't have any information really forward. And not happy at all about it. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting afterwards when they showed up and, and really showed our displeasure for the way that whole process came through, wishing we would have had an ability to make a decision, which we did not.
So my question is, my question? So my question is this, in the past, we've always voted on whether we wanted, uh, the Siskiyou Valley Union or we wanted, or we wanted ham care or whoever, why, why aren't we? So, so according to contract, how can they change that? How can, how can they change it? What, if, if they can do that, then we can, we can void the contract and do what we want then, correct?
That was kind of my feeling as well. And I, Senator, I have the same frustration that new people are hearing now, and I voiced that at one of our meetings, letting them know that this is not the way we do business. And they were very displeased and mean. We're starting some discussion around maybe some alternate ways of looking at it and doing it in a new way. Uh, we're still trying to generate some ideas, maybe with some things happening in Shaw, some other things happening around, seeing to avoid going down the same way that this happened. So here, here, I was very frustrated, as you can see now, don't understand it, didn't like it, made any place, but it was quite loud.
So did our contract include the dispatching fees?
Never before. Put your mic off. No, the contract did not include the dispatching fees. The town has always been responsible for paying the dispatching fees on its own, but we've never had a say in which dispatch contract the ambulatory service or the police service use.
Why do you, why did they expect? Ultimately, Henry, we all learned from this. We were shocked, they didn't even give us a phone call and say this is coming down. They said they switched because, uh, some, some story about getting better service, uh, knowing the area better, uh, being on the same page as everyone else. Underlying, you know there's an underlying story that we don't know. And in the past, this has never happened, this, and that's why it was definitely our bad to not be on top of it, that we apologize, but we never thought we'd have to worry about dispatching fees. And, and believing, uh, the next time we have a contract, we're gonna have the same dispatching fees, simple as that, it's gonna be in the contract. Or there's gonna be a set fee that's not gonna be able to change until that contract's up, or a, a, a regulated amount that's for inflation, whatever.
When I first started, the dispatch contract was separate, and for whatever reason, when MBR changed from St. Alton City Dispatch to Middlebury Dispatch, we somehow lost control of that. So I agree with the select board that we, when this one-year contract is done, uh, our contract will also be done with MBR, and the select board will have opportunity to renegotiate, uh, all aspects of the emergency services.
Any other discussion?
So dispatch would be for ambulance or is it also for?
It's a jet ambulance.
We pay separately dispatching, you'll see it in the fire department for, uh, the fireside, we pay ambulance, and we do also pay dispatching, but it is included in the contracted price for police. So we pay it three times for each service that we have in town.
All right, is there any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Can we get them for a reach-in contract?
Can we get them for a reach-in contract?
They said no. Pretty much what we were told is we either pay and shut up, and to, to go into what it would cost for a reach-in contract and so forth, um, it's gonna be heck a lot more than what the difference is on this, and we'll remember to you. All right, is there any other discussion? Yes, sir.
For the increase in the placing, are we getting any increase in hours? And who we contracted with that?
We, we are contracting with, we will be contracting with the service department, and, uh, we will be getting forty hours a week where we were getting twenty-six hours. Starting, that'll start July first.
So, so if I'm clear on this budget that you're asking for, it's going to be nine hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars with a two hundred thousand dollars from article seven, is that correct? Are there, are there any monies there that are gonna reduce that two hundred thousand or that's? So, okay, the hundred thousand's gonna reduce it, so, so our, our final budget is gonna be, uh, it's gonna be eight oh seven, one forty-seven, correct?
Right together.
Oh, okay, so then I understand, I can make a motion to move the hundred thousand dollars to our general fund to read, to, well, to read eight hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. To offset the cost. Right?
So you're saying, let me get this straight so I can write this down, give it this straight. The hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna get from Colonial, uh, Cathedral Square?
Yes.
That hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
You want to add that to our general fund? Is that correct?
I want to reduce it.
What I'm saying is the money's going to the fund.
Yes.
So then, so you're gonna reduce the estimate of seven oh seven to six oh seven?
Why not? Why can't you? It's, it's all town money.
It is all town money, but the deal isn't done yet. We don't know for sure that, that, there's a whole bunch of things that have to happen, permitting and everything else. We, we've said, yes, we'll do it, but, you know, we've given the green light, there may be something that comes up that stops it.
So, so someone please explain to me how I can word this to read that, the permits and stuff go through?
I think what you're saying is the hundred thousand dollars that we receive from Cathedral Square is going to be part of that two hundred thousand debt cost to develop. So it's only going to be one hundred thousand for the taxpayers, but not necessarily this year, so we're not gonna mess with these numbers. Because things move at the laces in government work, you know this. Are you good?
Are you gonna take the motion or no? Do you rate? Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Move to vote?
We're gonna move to vote. I'm gonna read the article again. Shall the voters of the town of Hy-Vee appropriate one million, four hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars to meet the expenses and liabilities of the general fund with an estimated seven hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars to be raised by taxes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article five. Okay, let's move on to article thirteen. To transact any other business legally authorized to be transacted, consider proper and necessary when met. I have a motion and second. Discussion?
Can I, is that one more question about the law, please? Well, you were asking in article seven for two hundred thousand dollars to be, that come, that is going to be the general fund, the general fund, okay? So that's gonna affect that number on article twelve. So that's gonna affect that number on Article 12. Is it or is it not?
The $100,000 that we receive is also going to go there to offset that $200,000.
I'm just reading it as it is. I'm just, so we have to bear with, I read it as it is. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we, we've got Australian ballot for next year, so we were never told what kind of meeting we're gonna have though, for sure. No, but we gotta have an informational meeting.
No, we didn't vote on that. You got nothing, you got Australian ballot. That's what we voted on.
I know, but we have to have a meeting.
We do, you have, you have all the select board meetings all year long.
And we will have informational meeting.
Yeah, but just say it now.
They will have it, but in this, in this floor today, we did not vote on an informational meeting. The town will have to discuss this at a later time, but today, we did not vote on it.
Because we need to have a, a meeting, like you guys were talking, and I know we amended that and everything, but we have to sort of have a promise or something that we're gonna have.
They're, they're hoping informational meeting. The select board will have an informational meeting.
I hope so.
We will, we all will know, we will keep having one. But at this article now, we could make a motion to make that official in this article if we wanted to right now. This article is about other business. You cannot spend money, but you can make amendments.
So can I make a motion to have a meeting? I just don't know when.
How about the Saturday before town meeting?
Okay.
Should be five days? Five days.
Within five days of town meeting.
Okay, so let me get this straight.
Before voting, yeah.
Well, before town meeting, because that's what we have. So let me get this correct to make sure we have this, we have this article. You wanna make a motion stating that within five days of the town meeting to have an informational meeting prior?
There's no town meeting, Chris.
There's no town meeting, though.
I get it, but the Australian vote was wrong. And they're still gonna call it town meeting, even though we don't have a town meeting, okay? But that is the premise of your amendment.
Yes.
Hello. So the thing about this, since we talked about the Australian ballot, informational versus the town meeting, throughout the share around during the town voting for Australian ballot, my understanding is that we wanna have a hybrid kind of quasi-town meeting slash informational meeting before voting that next year and in the future. One issue that came up is what we're doing right now, if we do it five days before, we're all we're gonna have are the articles printed, they're not gonna be able to be changed. You, you can argue, debate all you want five days prior, we can't change them five days prior. We have to get these articles written and published and worn, I think by December, is that correct, sure? By the end of December. So if we want this to be a interactive meeting where you can actually make a difference on what's on the article you're gonna vote for, we've gotta push this back to sometime in December. Five days prior, I can do any good to change once in a while, it will already be done. You can redo it all day long, but you can't change it. That's, that's the issue I see with doing it five days prior. Unless we can still amend it, but it's not a town meeting though. So we can't even make amendments, my understanding.
So when I was on the board, we went down the same road, because we had a town floor vote, or three towns for vote, they voted to vote Australian ballot, and then after that, we had to figure out how to get the information out and live within the Australian ballot. We tried doing one informational meeting, because by law, a municipal body that has an Australian ballot has to have an informational meeting within seven, ten businesses, like the league. It's law, you can't get around that. We found we had very poor attendance at that time, and we also had some people saying the exact thing you just said, where they, at that time, was doing a campaign. So we started doing pre-meetings in December to try to get people to come, and I was one of the few people that ever came. I was sometimes in. So we got no attendance at those, so then they started doing multiple informational meetings. Attendance was a little better, still in year five to 10, like everybody was talking about earlier. What worked for the dispatcher is working to an extent is they're doing a lot more online informational, little short videos, stuff like that. They still do the informational meetings, we have to do it. They still do the planning meetings, do all of them, in order to get all the input they can. But your attendance is low at all.
All right, ma'am. You have made an amendment to have an informational meeting five days prior to the first Tuesday in March, which would be Tuesday, the Australian Super Tuesday, where we vote, is that correct?
Does everybody in?
Huh?
Within five days.
That's what I said, within five days.
I know there's discussion that happened earlier, Chris said it doesn't work either, so I don't know. I just don't need to have some kind of meeting, just, so I'm just gonna leave it.
Are you gonna withdraw your, are you withdrawing your, uh, vote?
No. I'm just gonna leave it, wait, and stay with you.
I'll read this again, according to what I'm trying to figure out with you. We may do that, we have an informational meeting within five days of the first Tuesday of March, is that correct?
Should it be five or 10?
It's an hour of jury, no.
I know, we're not gonna be able to change anything at the meeting, but if we get the information when we come to vote, we can vote no.
Or yes.
Or yes. Yeah. We can discuss, and even if we can't change it that day, we will be informed on how to vote. Five days is good.
I need a second. All right, I'll read it again. We will have an informational meeting within five days to the first Tuesday in March. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I just have it. Anything else under... Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. I realize that we're all kind of tired this evening, wanna go home, but as much as I think local politics is important, I think it's also really important that we understand our privilege not just as citizens of Hygate and of the United States of America, but as global citizens, and I think it's really important that we acknowledge the fact that in the Middle East right now, there's ongoing genocide happening of the Palestinian people. And so I want to propose that the town of Hygate calls for a meeting and permits ceasefire from the Israeli occupation, and that the US government cease all funding to the Israeli occupation, that's about it. I'd be happy to talk about more.
Motion was made on the floor. Motion was made on the floor that we, we, the resolution, and we, the, the resolution to immediately ask for a ceasefire and... Gotta wait till I write this down. Now, where is this?
Against the Palestinian people.
What was the second part of that, ma'am?
That the federal government is waiving funding towards the Israeli occupation as well.
All right, let me see if I can get this right. Resolution to have an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, also to have a ceasefire of the Israeli occupation, is that correct?
Yep, it sounds about right.
Is there a second? A second? Any discussion? Yes, sir. On the line coming in is that we keep politics out of this meeting, and I think it's very ingenuous, this young lady to try and involve us in something that we have nothing to say about.
I would argue that right now, we're all involved in local political discourse, and it is our federal tax dollars that is actively funding the genocide of indigenous people overseas. I think, like, the accusation of being a disregardist is fine, but it's our money being used to thump their old children right now.
Hold on, I'm gonna check, I'm gonna check the moderator's votes, okay? Before we go any further.
I just wanted to let everyone know that the MVU girls varsity are heading to the championship today, and the bus is leaving the arena at 3:30, and if anybody wants to send them off to the lineup on the sideline or at the grand line, thank you.
I don't know, my mailer doesn't tell me that. I don't know anything.
All right, I'm gonna check, you can't break this up. Is there any, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? No discussion. We'll vote on this, and we'll repeat it again, the resolution to have an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, and have the federal government cease funding to the Israelis. All in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Resolution passed. All right, before we adjourn, the select board chairman would like to speak. We pay again.
Thank you, Scott, for your service and, and your charity. Um, the last thing I'd like to do is, I see he showed up, I wanna thank Peter at Saint Germaine for his service as a member. Who's you?
All right, in order to end this meeting, I need someone to make a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and adjourn. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.